Welcome to the City Council Meeting for the City of Crescent City. We have just convened out of closed session. Bob, could you please report out if there were any final actions taken?
Yes, Mayor, no final actions are taken in closed session.
Thank you, sir. Could you please call the role, Madam Deputy Clerk?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Westfall?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Burns?
Here.
Councilmember Murray?
Here.
Councilmember Slert?
Here.
And Mayor Shalhoub?
Here, thank you.
And Ms. Murray, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? If you'd all please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Before we move forward, I would like to add an emergency item to our agenda for the council's consideration. I've been asked by several employees at Pelican Bay State Prison for the council to consider writing a letter to the governor and to the state legislature to reconsider their plan to put employees on a 12-hour work shift and change their days off every other week. And basically, what the employees are worried about is that -- and we can talk more about it when we come to it on the agenda, but basically, the loss of all of the volunteer work that the majority of the employees out there do for our community, such as football, Little League coaches, volunteer firemen, reserve officers, things like that. It would really -- because one of the options that's on the floor is making them work 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. and reducing to two shifts rather than three. So, anyway, we can talk a little more about it, but they are in an urgent state of trying to get some support from our local community and would like us to consider this. And I would like to add it as the last item of new business, if the council would approve that. And Sean Harper and Mike Matts, they're both coaching right now, but they are going to try to be here around 7:00 o'clock p.m. to answer any questions the council has. So if I could get a motion, I would appreciate it.
I'll move to approve that and add it to our agenda as item number 17.
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded by, I think, Donna Westfall as a second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to acknowledgements this evening. We have a proclamation supporting the designation of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. And if I could get Mr. Burns to read that this evening, I would appreciate that.
Someone here to accept this?
Great.
You can, if you'd like, you could come up to the --
I'd come down there, but I have a flat wheel.
Sure, please, if you would.
This is a proclamation recognition of the Constitution Week, which is September 17th through the 23rd, 2010. And it reads as follows: Whereas September 17th, 2010, marks the 223rd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to all the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate this occasion. And whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, and whereas the Constitution of the United States of America is the cornerstone to the freedom which blankets our country, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Crescent City hereby proclaims the week of September 23rd of 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week, and asks that the citizens of Crescent City to reaffirm the ideals the founders of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed us through this guardian of our liberties and its signed envoys thereof. She sets her hand to this document and seal on the 7th day of September. Signed, Kelly Shalhoub, Mayor, City of Crescent City.
Well, the Delnot chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution would like to thank the mayor and the city council for acknowledging the Constitution Week with this proclamation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next one was yours, Charles? I don't know how you read that. If you want to turn to it.
Actually, it's not a proclamation.
You don't have a copy?
No.
Should we pass this down? Okay, so next, we are going to consider and approve a proclamation supporting the designation of the City of Crescent City as being a "Let's Move" city. And this is a proclamation in relationship to the First Lady and her strive to, I think, keep our communities healthy. And Mr. Slert asked that this be on our agenda, so I'd like him to read it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Do we have -- oh, are you here to accept? Thank you.
This is a proclamation designating the City of Crescent City, California, as a "Let's Move" city. Whereas on February 9th, 2010, First Lady Michelle Obama announced an ambitious national goal of solving the challenge of childhood obesity within a generation so that children born today will reach adulthood at a healthy weight, and veiled the nationwide campaign "Let's Move" to help achieve it. And whereas the campaign will combat the epidemic of childhood obesity through a comprehensive approach that builds on effective strategies and mobilizes public and private sector resources. And whereas "Let's Move" will engage every sector impacting the health of children to achieve the national goal, and will provide schools, families, communities, simple tools to help kids be more active, eat better, get healthy. And whereas, to support "Let's Move" and facilitate and coordinate partnerships with states, communities, and the nonprofit, for-profit private sectors, the nation's leading children's health foundations have come together to create a new independent foundation, the Partnership for a Healthier America, which will accelerate existing efforts addressing childhood obesity and facilitate new commitments towards the national goal of solving childhood obesity within a generation. And now, therefore, the City Council of Crescent City, California hereby proclaims the City of Crescent City a "Let's Move" city. And witness, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Crescent City to be affixed this 7th day, September 20th. Mayor Kelly Shalhoub.
This is the H.B. Goffner. Well, thank you for taking the time and the effort to read over the information and understanding how important it is in our community. The information that we've gathered so far over the last few years has identified our schools and our kids in our schools at a 44.5% overweight and obesity level. So it's something that we need to definitely take seriously and start as soon as possible. So thank you for taking the time.
Thanks for bringing it to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slert. Okay, we're going to move on to our consent calendar, which consists of the regular meeting minutes of August 16th, our warrant claims, August 17th through September 7th, and biweekly payroll reports.
I would move to approve as submitted, Madam Mayor, and I'd request a couple of clarifications.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Do you want to wait till he makes his corrections?
On page 2 of Accounts Payable, there's a line item for City Attorney Robert Black for $16,763, $65. And then, in subsequent pages, on page 13, there's a series of legal services, something like 10 different line items. And I was just wondering, those plus or minus 10 items represent another $16,000, nearly $700. And my assessment is that this is probably related to the initiative that was proposed regarding ruling back the sewer rates. And so if we could just have a clarification on those expenses?
The total amount to Mr. Black is the $16,765. The breakdown that you'll see, the 16 different items that you referred to, is just a line item for each issue that he works on. And so they're not additional costs. They're the breakdown of that $16,000. And I will be signing checks in the morning, so I didn't actually see his bill yet. But I would assume that it, as you will take a look at our closed session and you have participated in, you know what our legal lawsuits are. And Mr. Black has been very busy representing our city. And a large majority of that is the initiative, sewer initiative. Part of it is the new lawsuits filed by Ms. Westfall. And then we also have a couple other lawsuits that are nearing the end, that have to do with our police department and previous employee Sanchez.
Okay.
So I don't have the breakdown for you tonight, but you could get a copy of his bill tomorrow morning if you'd like.
Okay. And I guess I would ask Mr. Butler, that we continue to track the associated cost relative to the various legal actions on the part of Ms. Westfall. And I think it's important to note that the very council member who claims to have a conscientiousness about spending our city funds is actually the one that seems to be costing us a substantial amount of money. So with that, I would move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favor?
I have, excuse me, Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I have a correction.
What page?
Page 2 of the minutes. Third paragraph down. It's regarding when I stated she would have voted for the increase caught unawares, would not have voted for it otherwise because she does not agree with pay raises. It should also include cost of living increases or increases in benefits during these recessionary times.
Is that, was that on the record that you stated that?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
So I'd like included.
I'll be happy to include it.
Corrected the minutes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Is your second still?
Yes.
With any fractions?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on. We have no public hearings tonight and no outside reports. Mr. Butler?
That's correct, Mayor, and none this evening.
Okay, we're going to open public comment at this time. Any member of the audience is invited to address the City Council on any matter within our jurisdiction. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted, note however that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Once you've been recognized by the mayor, you could come forward and have three minutes to state your comments. And if you're unfamiliar with our light system, I can help you along with that. Is there any public comment? Welcome, Ms. Charlie. Bill?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Bill Lonsdale, and I live in Crescent City. And this is the second time that I've addressed your council or your predecessor council on the Constitution Day. The last time was on the 220th anniversary in September of 2007. At that point, I appeared before your predecessor council feeling disenfranchised because as a ratepayer who happened at that time to be a tenant, I was not allowed to vote on the sewer rate question. Your predecessor council responded to that and opened the voting up to tenants as well as property owners. In the current situation, you have received a letter from the county dated the 26th of August asking that the city help with the question of the disenfranchisement of ratepayers who happen to live in the county and are not being allowed to vote on a question of what goes into our water. I came here prepared to ask your council to consider putting this on your agenda because I was surprised that it wasn't, as an emergency time-sensitive item. And tonight, there is a precedent for doing that. But the city is a steward of the water system and the sewer system that serves people both in the city and outside the city. When the city earlier this year certified that initiative to go on the ballot, no questions were asked about, does everybody who is a ratepayer get a chance to vote? It's on the ballot. The clock has run out. I talked to this county clerk this morning. The ballots have gone to the printer. It's too late to take it off the ballot, but it is not too late for the city to take a position relative to the rights under the Constitution, since this is a week where we're celebrating the Constitution and pledging to support the freedoms that it gives us. It's not too late to take a position with respect to what we're going to do about it. Clearly, the election will be invalid. It's subject to so many challenges that it's going to, you think you're running up legal bills now? Just wait. The only reaction we've heard from the city came from a senior city official quoted in the triplicate who outlined the recourse that those of us who live in the county have. And I quote, "They can contribute funds, do door-to-door campaigning, write advocacy letters, and things like that." Now, if that's a correct quote, that indicates a singularly cavalier attitude toward the rights of ratepayers into the city's water system. And I fully expect that the council will, at this meeting or at a subsequent meeting, do something about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lonsdale. Is there any other public comment? Mr. Nia?
Richard Nia, and I'm a resident of the city, 211 West 7th Street. It's interesting to hear talk about our sewer and water systems that the county gave up for their residents to contract with the City of Crescent City many years ago. And so the city owns those businesses. In fact, the county tried to take away our water about 10 years ago, and they couldn't do that. Belongs to the city. If residents of the county want to complain about the water or the sewer, maybe they need to start their own. They gave it to the city to control. The city put it in. The county signed the contract. Mr. Lonsdale needs to talk to the board of supervisors, not the city council. The city owns the water. I don't know any court that would overturn that, to have people vote that have no stake in the water system. They didn't build it. They are merely ratepayers because the county chooses to do that. The county bill wants to build a water company, they can do it. So I don't think there's anything at stake. This has been going on for 50 years or more. County residents don't have a vote because their board of supervisors chose to contract that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nia. Is there any other public comment?
Yes. I'm Donna Westfall. I live in the city, and I'd like to read a letter from Rachel Tau. It has become a habit with Councilman Charles Slert to badmouth Councilwoman Donna Westfall at the end of council meetings at council comment time. Reason could be that no one has a chance to rebut his comments. He can go on and on and on and on and on and on. Under these conditions, one could expect an occasional outburst from the audience, as was the case Monday night, August 16th. Jesse Salisbury called out "diatribe." Timothy Abbey called out "you're not speaking for the people." Mayor Shalhoub instructed Police Chief Doug Plack to escort those unruly members of the audience out if they didn't quiet down. Most people don't know that there were close to 500 signatures each to recall Councilwoman Catherine Murray and Councilman Charles Slert. Half were considered non-sufficient by County Clerk Alyssa Northrup, including my husband's signature. We have lived and voted here for 46 years, and when we challenged Ms. Northrup, she would not change her mind. Charles Slert seems confident that the people would not vote to roll the sewer rates back. If he and his fellow three council members are so confident that people wouldn't vote to roll back sewer rates, why did the four of them vote to sue Westfall? It makes one wonder why this council spent so much money to keep the initiative off the ballot if that's how they think. Slert blames Westfall for all the money that went into the pocket of the city's attorney. I think some attorneys milk the system. Westfall's attorney, Tim Biddle, from Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association, costs the taxpayers nothing. To keep the initiative from going on the ballot violates the people's constitutional right to vote and California Elections Code, Section 18620D. When one runs for public office and the people vote them in, they should set a higher standard. The public expects it. At the town hall meeting on May 10th at the Fire Hall on Washington Boulevard, Mayor Kelly Shalhoub bragged to the crowd about the lawsuit the city had against myself and Ms. Westfall, calling our names out in order to humiliate us. The city sued us for exercising our constitutional rights by getting signatures to roll the sewer rates back and wanting it to go to a vote. The mayor, excuse me, it is not hard to understand why the city is spending so much of our money on attorneys' fees. Thank you very much.
Oh, I was hoping for the part where she called me a little girl. Sorry. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. I am going to ask Mr. Butler to allow Mr. Black to address the concerns of the vote on fluoridation, if you don't mind. Because I just wanted to be clear that this council absolutely asked the questions, but it was probably done in a closed session setting due to the litigation factor. But we were, you know, we were educated on whether or not the county residents could vote on the issue. So if, but I think it's a valid question, and I would like to have it addressed if possible.
Madam Mayor, how many ratepayers?
Sorry, ratepayers.
Well, I'm happy to speak to it, and I don't want to, in speaking to it, I don't want my comments to be taken as a direct response, much less a rebuttal to the county's letter, because I haven't had time to research the specific point that the county makes with regard to equal protection. I would say generally that the county ratepayers or customers, people that are actually on the water system, do have certain rights with respect to rates that were given to them under Prop 218, which allows them to be part of the protest process, as was the case in the sewer rate increases. So they are not completely disenfranchised. They are partially disenfranchised in their capacity as voters. And by that, we do refer back to county residents, because in the case of the water system, we have the ability of city residents, the acknowledged ability of city residents to cast their ballots on the fluoridation question. And the issue being raised is whether or not county residents, those, whether they're on the sewer system or not on the sewer system, if they live in a certain territory or zone, they would be allowed to vote on the fluoridation question, even those who are on wells. Why would that be? Because voting is determined by residents, and it's determined, the right to vote on a given issue is determined by geography. So one of the problems we have in allowing county residents to actually vote on the sewer system is there are no precincts that reflect whether or not--
You mean the fluoridation issue?
I'm sorry, the fluoridation issue, pardon me. Whether or not county residents can vote on the fluoridation issue is dicey because there are no precincts that are structured around the residency of people that are on the water system or eligible to be on the water system. So that would have to be corrected. A district or a zone would have to be created, and then people within that zone allowed to vote. All of that could be done, but none of that infrastructure is in place. And I'm not sure what the legal mechanism to create such a zone or to create such precincts would be. So, you know, it's not an easy question. The way that I look at it in the short term is that you, the city council, are the body that makes the decisions relative to the water system. And the voters of the city are your constituents, and they are the foundation on which the city is built. They own, the voters of the city own the city, and therefore, they own the water system. So those are the type of concerns. If you go back to the 1970 or '74 ballot, I forget which was the actual year, there was a ballot process back then in which only city residents voted to add fluoride to the water system. So there's a lot of precedent. The issues are serious. I'm not making light of the desire of county residents in any fashion to have a vote on whether or not there's fluoride in their water. But I also think that for the present and for the short term, the structure that we live on, live under is, it's a city water system, and it's a decision that, at this point, is going to be made strictly by city residents.
Thank you. Okay, was there any other public comment? I think I, did I close public comment? I think I did, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to continuing business. Consider and approve payment number 39 for wall and construction, stover engineering regarding the wastewater treatment plant. Regular process, very near the end of the project, which is a good feeling, 92%. Regular process, very near the end of the project, which is a good feeling, 92% complete in billing. So, can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
I'll second that.
Okay, could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Westfall?
No.
Mayor Protenburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sler?
Yes.
And Mayor Shalong.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, number 10. Consider and adopt the second reading of the ordinance 758. I'm going to excuse myself. Mr. Burns, if you could take over?
Got it. This came to us, I believe, last meeting, or the, waiving the first reading. So now we're going on to adopt this second reading of ordinance 758, changing the business improvement district categories and amounts which are attached. So, any comment from staff first?
Now, it's just the final step in what has been a multi-step process to get these changes made, as recommended by the bid advisory board. So this is just the second reading of the ordinance, and the ordinance would take effect 30 days from tonight's adoption if the council votes in the affirmative.
Okay. Any questions from council?
No.
Any public comment? Please state your name for the record.
Billy K. Gavin Tiger, President of Bid. I just wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you for getting us to this point and directing both city staff and city council, getting us to a compliance stage and structure and a functioning bid that is fair across the board. That hasn't always been the case, and we're looking really forward, and me personally, to continuing to lead us in a positive manner and capacity. And we have a lot of things on our horizon, and we're excited to actually be able to accomplish those over the next several years. So I just wanted to tell you all thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? No further public comment. I'll close public comment. Bring us back to the council.
I would move to approve ordinance number 758, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, amending Chapter 5.100 of the Crescent City Municipal Code, changing the business improvement district business categories and amounts of assessments.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion second. Thank you. Will you please poll the council members?
Councilmember Sler?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
And Mayor Protenburn?
Yes. Please note that it's a 4-2, essentially 4-0-1 vote, with Mayor Shalong abstaining and recusing herself. Doug, could you get the mayor, please? In the meantime, we're going to go on to item 11, which is, I think the mayor's going to appoint a two-member city council ad hoc committee to the CDVG grant program so that we can have some input into programs and priorities. And I thought I'd talk long enough for Kelly to get back. Funny thing happened on the way to the council meeting tonight. I'm stalling as best I can. I've already introduced 11, but you're going to appoint a two-member ad hoc committee.
Oh, I am?
Yes.
Yes, I am. Okay. Well, Mr. Butler, do you want to give a little background here?
Sure. On Monday of last week, August 30th, the city council held a workshop that focused on the community development block grant process and some other grant, federal grant funding issues. And there were a couple of follow-up items that came out of that meeting that we wanted to start getting nailed down quickly, one being the possible appointment of a two-member council ad hoc committee that would work on into the future on the CDVG grant process and the selection of which agencies were going, and projects were going to be recommended for funding. So we wanted to talk about that. And then we also had some discussion about changing the guidelines for the use of our CDVG program income funds, and had just a brief discussion about that on August 30th, but wanted to go into a little more detail this evening. So we have Charlene Maisie, contract grants manager here tonight, to kind of walk us through both of those items. And she'll be making some recommendations during her presentation.
Okay. This particular ad hoc committee, length of service?
I would say the appointment should be at least a year, at least to start.
Okay.
Because, you know, there'll be work throughout the year with more intensified focus in the months immediately prior to when the council makes its recommendations. So spring, probably, February, March.
Depending, the, as I explained in the second memo that I submitted for this meeting, the process is that the initial public meeting that CDVG requires is where a lot of the idea discussion happens, and we have to have one of those within a 12-month period of any application that we submit. So we're thinking when, traditionally, we've had that meeting after the NOFA's get released, and it doesn't give us any time to really do a good job. And so Jim Carnegie, who is my counterpart with the county, and I thought, you know, why do we wait that long? We know basically what the programs are going to be. So we're talking maybe late January, February, when things calm down after the holidays, of having that initial meeting to discuss any ideas that people might have for any of the funding that would come up for that entire calendar year. And then as the opportunities come up, so that would be one place that that committee would want to participate, is in that initial discussion and hear what ideas are and talk about that. And then as each funding opportunity comes up, there would be a decision-making process for what projects and programs would get included in the specific applications as the NOFA's are released, and then the committee would participate in that process as well.
Okay, great. Would it be more responsible to make that appointment after the new council is seated in November?
You could choose to do it that way. I don't think there's anything earth-shattering timeline-wise between now and mid-November where we would need that committee in place.
Okay, I just thought I heard. They wouldn't meet till after January, or in January?
Probably not. The only things that potentially, the state has suspended any further notices of funding availability for their funding for the rest of this year. I'm attending the CDVG conference next week, and I'm hoping to get some answers about, is that for real? Are they going to, you know, tweak things and maybe later? Because the microenterprize program that North Coast Small Business Development Center runs is one of the things we were going to apply for in the economic development NOFA that's now suspended. So that would be the only real decision-making that needs to happen before next year. And if you're comfortable with just, you know, normally they're the only ones that come forward for that opportunity. So if you're comfortable just going that-
How do we actually educate the community about that opportunity?
That's what that initial planning meeting is for. And I think probably we need to do a little bit better job of outreach. We're required to do a notice of public hearing, but if we can get the triplicate to put it on the front page the way they did the workshop that we just had, we've had a very good attendance from the general public at the workshop, and a lot of good questions were asked and a good give and take. So I think we just need to make it a little bit more not known that we're having that initial workshop, and that's where the ideas happen, and that's where people talk about what, what things we can do with the money and what we can't. That's almost, a lot of times, that's as important as what we can.
Okay. Okay. Well, I don't know how the rest of council feels.
I don't think there's a hurry.
Yeah. Dennis won't be here. I may not be here. So I would rather have the new mayor appoint the ad hoc committee.
But in concept, I think it's appropriate to have a couple council members on an ad hoc committee to help that process.
Absolutely. We, I don't think we've done that in the past, and I-
That was my next question, is the council comfortable with that concept of having a two-person committee doing the bulk of the heavy-duty research and then making recommendations to the full council? Because that will be something kind of new, but we think it will be more effective than some, it's certainly more effective, in my opinion, than the old, what I call the dog and only show, where all the groups come down on one night for one public hearing and make their case, and it just creates a number of, that approach can create a number of problems. Whereas if you've got a council subcommittee that has the time to really delve into a lot of the questions and issues with each organization, it can just make for a better process overall. And the council, the full council, still has the final say.
I think it's a better process. I've been involved in that scenario several times, and I always felt like, well, I always felt like there were more things I wanted to put on the list, you know, that were never brought to the council, and I never, you know, really understood why. So I think having some council participation in the beginning that makes a recommendation of the council will, I think, be a better process.
Well, and I do want to assure the members that end up on the committee, they aren't going to be out there on their own. I fully intend that the staff and me-
Right, sure.
Jim Carnegie will participate. It allows us to coordinate with the county. So it's just, it'll be a group process. They won't be out there.
And better coordination with the county, so I think it's a great idea.
Great. Okay, I think we'll put this off until maybe the first meeting in December.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there any public comment?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Bill Lonsdale again. I've already corresponded with your council about this issue, and so I won't go back over that. Sounds from the comments as though part of the council has already made up their mind about having this ad hoc committee, but I would like to offer a couple of thoughts on that. It is one of the things that is wrong with the way our Board of Supervisors does business. These two-by-twos behind closed doors with interested parties and then coming to the full board with more information than the other members of the board have. As a simple matter of human dynamics, it gives the advantage to whatever arrangement has been made, again, behind closed doors by the subcommittee or the ad hoc committee. The mayor ran into this problem recently when the losers for the trash collection franchise charged that the vote was invalid, the full board's vote was invalid, because only the two members of the subcommittee had sufficient information to vote intelligently. What is the rest of the board chopped liver? What is the rest of your council behind your ad hoc committee chopped liver also? I reject the notion that the full council doesn't have the smarts to consider these issues in open session, maybe not in a council meeting, but in an open, noticed workshop session. Two-by, these off-the-books, two-member things are deliberately designed to take the process out from under public scrutiny. And here, on the week that we celebrate the Constitution, we're moving away from open government. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lonsdale. I can guarantee that's not the intent. It's just to get more, previously, when we went through this process, this council sat up here, and we were given a list for our meeting, and we had people come here and request money. And we didn't feel like we were part of the process. It was all done on a staff level. And so I actually am one of the ones that made a comment that it would be nice to have more input from the council prior to the decision-making process of who we're going to fund, you know, most, they're usually mostly nonprofits, to see if maybe there were some more creative ideas that could be brought to the table and other things that we could fund in our community that may not necessarily be a nonprofit, but maybe, you know, more philanthropic, philanthropic, sorry. And so Rod brought, you know, this option to the council of having two of us sit down with staff ahead of time and try to get a little more creative with that list before it comes to the council. I don't have a problem doing it either way, but I'd like, I personally would like the council to have more input prior to the list being handed to us. And that's how we got to the point that we are today.
And could we have maybe Charlene, Madam Mayor, clarify? Because it was my understanding that this committee of staff and/or council would conduct a public planning phase hearing, so that it's open and transparent.
Yeah, the Community Development Block Grant Program requires a great deal of public input, and that's why every year you're required to have two noticed public hearings with regard to the types of programs and projects that are going to be funded by CDVG applications. And that first planning phase meeting, again, we talked about a publicizing it better so that the public is more aware of it, but we do hold an open meeting. It's a free flow of ideas. It's a time for people to come forward and suggest, here's what we think we need to fund, where community priorities are brought to the forefront. The problem is that there are always far more requests for funding than can be funded by the amount that we're allowed to apply for. And the process of winnowing that list down from all of the ideas and all of the requests and all of the need in the community to a good application that's going to be competitive and potentially fundable can't happen in an open session in any amount of time. You have to have the time to sit down. A lot of times, there's give and take between the potential applicants and the folks that are making that decision, asking questions, going over their budgets, talking about their past program performance. There's a lot that goes into making that decision that it's just too cumbersome to have responsibly done in a public meeting. And so the public has the opportunity to talk about the ideas at that initial public hearing, and they have a chance to talk about what gets put into the final application at the application phase public hearing. So there is plenty of opportunity for public input. We just need to do a little bit better job of letting the public know what those opportunities are.
And I have to say that I've been on the other side over there, and I've sat at both city and county meetings where the considerations have been deliberated, and there's been a lot of confusion, although we've come a long way in working better with both the city and the county together. But, you know, there's been a vast amount of improvement. But it would be nice to be able to work directly with Jim Carnegie in how we're going to fund as many agencies as possible and get the most bang for our buck with what we're doing here in our community. So I think that's a huge help. And I know that, you know, if we have the communication on how we're going to fund as much as possible with the monies that are available to our community between the city and the county, that's a huge help. So if we have that dialogue informally first, and then in open meetings, then we can do that a lot better by having the informal ad hoc. So I, that's why I think it's a good way to go. So that's why I'm for it.
Well, we'll bring this back to the table.
Okay.
Number 12. Discuss and provide guidance to the staff as to implementation of new options allowed by the state for the use of those funds. Mr. Butler?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is something we discussed briefly before we talked a little bit about at the August 30 workshop. The city currently has about $156,000 in program income money available for use or reuse. That has come about through the repayment of home rehabilitation loans that have been paid back, either as people sell their homes or refinance. There is also the possibility of significant additions to that pot of money over the next 12 months. So you could be looking at a significantly larger amount than even $156,000. So we need to start to think about how we can most appropriately use those funds. And Charlene has already begun some work in talking to the folks at the state Housing and Community Development Department about what the new guidelines will allow, and she's prepared a good staff report to kind of guide the discussion this evening about what the council's priorities are as we look to starting to cycle some of that money back into the community. So with that, I'll transition it over to Charlene.
Welcome.
Welcome again. First thing I want to do is clarify that this is a different pot of money from the annual applications for grant funding that we get. What this is, is any time a community development block grant-funded program generates more than $25,000 annually in payback or income, that's considered community development block grant program income. And there are restrictions on how we can spend that. And up until recently, we were only allowed to spend that money on either a revolving loan fund, so we could spend it on more housing rehabilitation loans as they came in, or we could spend it- could spend it on activities in currently open grants. And the council did that with two of the programs that were funded by the 2005 grant before it closed out. Recently, the state has released a management memo that allows for pretty much unlimited options for spending program income. As long as a program or a project qualifies for CDBG funding, which means it has to meet all of the other criteria that would normally go, low income benefit, all of that sort of thing, that you can now use program income to fund that project outside of the normal application process. You still have to get approval from the state for each program that you want to fund, but there's no competition. You don't have to worry about, is this a competitive proposal? It just has to qualify as-
Does it still have to meet the TIG requirements?
Has to be 51% targeted income group. So it still has to meet that minimum qualification. But even though there is a possibility that that fund might become larger in the course of the year, it still is a finite resource, and it can go very rapidly. We talked a little bit at the last item about there's always a lot more need than there is money to fund it. So my thought was there needs to be some sort of framework before we kind of put it out there that this money is available for how do we prioritize spending it so that it doesn't just get gone and then it's, there isn't any more? Because right now, the loans that you guys have coming in are mostly deferred, and they only pay off when someone refinances or sells. So it's not like there's a steady stream of income coming into that.
So my question for you is, one thing that's important to me is our issues with our youth. And I would love to see the city work with the California Endowment to secure some sort of teen center, whatever that may look like. You know, I met with them last week, and, you know, it's part of the priority, you know, our kids are, but so it may not look like, you know, a big, beautiful teen center, but maybe to start the process more along, you know, neighborhood areas, places where kids can go to in certain neighborhoods so they don't have to be transported. Maybe they don't live right in the city, and yet they have a need for some supervised time after hours. And so maybe more neighborhood kinds of centers for the kids. Would that qualify?
If the children being helped fall into the targeted income group, it would qualify.
And how do you devise whether or not they meet that income group prior to applying for the money?
Well, the way that you structure your program is that if you're going to use CDBG funds to benefit someone, then they have to provide you with income information. And so the family, if they could apply for a scholarship, and you could use the fund as a scholarship for low-income families, but the family has to provide you with it. The other way that you can do it, which is a lot more difficult, is if you're going to serve a particular area, you can do what's called an income survey, which means you actually go door to door, and you have to get a certain number of people within that area to give you their income information. And then the state looks at that and says, okay, this area has at least 51% targeted income groups, so.
So you can't take the fact that, you know, a certain percentage of our residents are below poverty?
You can if it's a program. It would be difficult, you might have to squeak it by because you're going to be serving more than just city residents. And that's where you get a little shaky, is it really, you know, can you really use the city's 51, I think it's 62% targeted income group if you're running a program that serves people outside the city limits?
Okay. And what about the library?
Depends on what they want to do. And again, you have to look at that low-income benefit. So these are all questions that we need to have the framework for what priority, you know, are we going to look at? One of the things that I recommended was that we prioritize projects that would be eligible but not competitive in a regular application. So for example, if you're serving a program in the city limits where we're 62%, that is an eligible program. It's not competitive, and we normally wouldn't include it in a regular application for funding. That would be an ideal use for some program income because we don't have to worry about competitive.
Which, I'm sorry, I missed the, what you called the program?
I'm not, I'm not talking about specific programs right now. What I'm looking for is a framework for how we prioritize when we start getting requests like that for, do you want to fund a youth center? Do you want to fund this? Because I actually, we had a question from one of our usual applicants right before this management memo came out, asking whether this program income was going to be available for them to apply for in addition to what we normally apply for in the regular applications. And so that is just a signal to me that, you know, the folks that we usually apply for could eat this money up in one shot. It's about six months' operation for CAM. So I wanted to have you guys be able to say, do we want to look at something different? And some of those more creative ideas that you were talking about is a way that we can use this money to fund things that we wouldn't maybe normally be able to get funded in an application. But before we put that out there to the community, we need to have a framework to say, this is what the council's priorities are for, in concept, not for specific projects, but conceptually, we want to prioritize those projects that wouldn't be put in an application. Do we want to fund one-time expenses as opposed to ongoing operating costs? Because again, this is a finite resource. We may not want to encourage people to try to rely on it for operating, but if somebody wants to start a program, do startup costs. You know, there's a whole list of things that I put into the memo for this evening that I would like to have your input on as far as what you think makes sense. And then, once I kind of know what direction you want to go, then I will start talking to our reps at HCD and find out how much of it has to be in our approved program income reuse plan and how much of it can just be internal policy.
Counsel, any questions for Charlene?
No, but I guess I've got a comment. The program income fund is a relatively small amount of money in the bigger scheme of things, and it hasn't been available except for when there's a transfer of ownership or the loans repaid. So now the state has stepped in and said-
Well, I don't know if I would say that. The program income is available anytime there is a revenue of, in excess of $25,000 created from that grant fund, right?
But the only time that happens for the city is when a loan pays off. It doesn't happen on a regular basis.
Right, but the funds can be used for any program that we've funded in that cycle. So for instance, the 2005 CDBG grant cycle, a couple of the grantees, one was CASA and the other was-
CAM.
CAM. They had actually received monies, and so we had program income left over that we actually granted to them because they were already approved in that cycle.
But now the state is saying that you have more flexibility-
Right.
Relative to those funds.
Right.
Because before, it was only, you could either loan it out for more housing rehab or you could use it for an open grant. So for example, right now, the only open grant we have is for the North Coast Small Business Development Centers Micro Enterprise Program. So under the old guidelines before that management memo came out, that would have been the only program you could use program income for. And so it really did restrict how much you could do with that money. So this is opening it up to a much wider use.
So the notion that Charlene's looking for, you know, a framework to be created is absolutely correct. And I think one notion that it's available, funds available to an otherwise non-qualifying group, or the group that would be non-competitive in traditional terms, has some merit. The requirements are actually quite demanding in all of the programs. So it's not easy money, if you will.
Right. You know, I've always been a fan as well of starting a program that would allow first-time homebuyers to have assistance with maybe a down payment.
There's actually a first-time homebuyers program that you can apply for money for. So if that's something that you want to do, we can look into that in the next cycle.
But what you're asking for, since we have to use all those qualities for CDBG funding, we should, whatever organization or unit is requesting those funds, they still have to meet all of those funding guidelines.
Right.
So even if they didn't apply the first time, it could be somebody, a brand-new one, is that correct?
Yes. As long as they meet that 51% targeted income group, and that's kind of the key right there. It can be a new group, and I kind of-
And these are the five elements that have to be? You've included these five elements.
They don't have to be, but those are things that I would like, they're just thoughts that I had, that if I were going to put this together all by myself, I would say, you know, here's some things that I would want to do to open this up a little bit more and to try to preserve the money as much as possible.
You still have to open this up to say, this money is available, please turn in your requests?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, but I don't want to do that until I kind of know where you guys want to go with it.
I want a teen center, I want a library, I want-
No projects! That comes next!
Rod, were you saying that we have $106,000?
$156,000 is the current.
$156,000. My opinion, I like number three, give priority to one-time expenditures over ongoing operating costs because program income cannot be counted on every year, and organizations should not be encouraged to rely on it for ongoing operating expenses.
I don't know if we should exclude any of these because a lot of them still need to be done. For example, I would still want a completed written proposal. And maybe we do want to place a limit, but again, maybe there's one, one thing that nobody's thought of, and somebody thinks of this one thing, they can use all $156,000. So I wouldn't necessarily want to place a limit on it.
So these are recommended?
And any of those, any of those can be worded to allow you to ignore them if you want. They're just guidelines. And if there's anything, I guess maybe what might, this is probably going to be a multi-step kind of process, because right now I'm just kind of looking, there's this vague idea of this money we can spend. I'm trying to get it down to a little more concrete.
But it might be easier to say, just like you said, no projects. You know, as far as like facilities-type things, like a youth center. So I don't know how you word that.
Well, when I said no projects, I meant no projects for tonight's discussion. That's not what we're talking about right now.
I understand what you're talking about.
I mean, seriously, if somebody came to the table and said, hey, I want to build a teen center, and the city wants a teen center, and Cal Endowment wants the kids to be taken care of, if we all put our money in the same pot, we can make it happen, you know? So I wouldn't say no projects, but I like the idea of having it open, of people presenting a proposal, and not saying no to anything until we have the opportunity to review it. And I think we need to educate the community more about what's, you know, that we have this money available and what the qualifications are.
Well, and that's kind of what I'm looking for is, you know, do you want to just open it up to any qualifying, or do you want to put a few more, I don't want to say restrictions necessarily, but a few more prioritizations on it so that we have the opportunity to preserve? Or do you want to just leave it open and let anybody come and not have any priorities up front and decide on the priorities after you-
See what we get?
Because you're going to get way more than $156,000, I can guarantee you that.
Madam Mayor and Charlene, getting back to giving priority to one-time expenditures, that doesn't mean that the whole $156,000 has to be spent in one endeavor. We could chop it up.
No.
All right, just want to make sure everybody understood that. Because we could put $50,000 in a teen center and the rest another, and you're just saying tonight isn't the night to come up with our list, our wish list.
That's right. And when I say one-time expenditures, what I mean is something like, we need to purchase computers for our teen center, or we need to purchase XYZ playground equipment, or we need to do something that they're going to, it's a one-time shot, and it's not, I need to pay the salary for my staff for the next 10 years kind of thing.
I like that idea. You just made me think of our relationship with First Five, you know, providing more opportunities for the kids right there in their apartment buildings. And, you know, I just came across the situation recently where, you know, it was a bad situation in a multifamily, and that multifamily is, has not cooperated with the city in, you know, providing that safe place. So there's so many needs out there.
Which is why I'm hoping to get a little bit narrower than just, we've got this money because, like I say, it can be gone in a flash. So I mean, we can, we can go either way. We can try to put some priorities in place now ahead of time so that organizations have a little bit more idea of what may or may not be a good project. You know, if we're going to prioritize projects that we wouldn't normally put in an application, I wouldn't want to waste the time of one of our regulars in putting together a proposal if it's likely that they're probably not going to be considered. So I, you know, I don't know. But then again, with the way the state is with their, maybe we're going to issue a NOFA, maybe we're not, I also wouldn't want to shut the door on any of those folks if the financial need is there. So it's just, it's a very wide-open question, and I didn't want to-
You're getting a wide-open answer?
No, I am.
Without looking at proposals, I don't, maybe there's something out there, if we restrict what people put in, maybe that's the one that needs to be funded. And you say, you know, you can't put in an application, but maybe that would be, I don't know, I find, I find it hard to say, we're not going to look at X, Y, or Z, but only A, B, and C. I don't know. That's just me.
I think I agree.
So do you want to put any kind of a cap on individual proposals and say, we're going to fund things within this dollar amount, or do you want to not have any restrictions at all?
We could fund 20 projects or one. I think it depends. I don't, that's just my opinion, so I don't know what other council members want to do.
It sounds like it wants to be open-ended within the framework of the CBDG program income requirements. So that there's some flexibility and latitude to assess, because again, it's about the strengths and/or the merits of whatever the proposals are at the time that they're proposed. And trying to second-guess what's going to be proposed or eliminate people up front might be doing a disservice.
And so the question would be, do you want to have a period of time where people can apply and have a closing date and decide after that closing date? Or do you want to just open it up and say, just give us your proposals as you want, and we'll look at them kind of as they go along?
I like the idea of a deadline.
I do, too.
I think that'd be easier to manage.
I don't think it has to be a long, drawn-out affair either. Because people already have some plans, and, I mean, I don't- Because people already have some plans and, I mean, I don't want to go out, are there timelines that you have to give?
No.
So you can say by October 1st, if you don't have your plan in, we'll consider all plans or all...
Well, I wouldn't say October 1st.
I'm just giving that as an example.
Okay.
Right. And then we'd have to figure out a scoring matrix supposedly, I guess.
Yeah, there would have to be, we'd have to figure out a...
I think you kind of get the gist of where we're going.
Yeah. So from that, I don't think that there would be any need to do any kind of revision to the program income guidelines. The step would be that you decide what projects you want to forward on to the state and then the state would say yea or nay on each one. So it would involve, amazingly enough, the application form that I would ask the applicants to fill out is going to look a lot like what we have to send to HCD so that we don't have to put a bunch of extra work in it.
Okay.
And so that would be how, you know, they would submit their proposals to us. We decide what we want to forward.
And is there assistance for them in filling that application out?
It's not, yeah, I mean, I would, but it's not hard.
Okay.
So yeah, I mean, I would ask, answer any questions that anybody would have about what goes in which box.
Okay.
What's a time, what's a good timeframe to have people submit their?
Well, that was going to be my next question. Do you guys want to make this decision or do you want to defer it to the income council and have the committee help?
Well, we already know what the money is and I think it's good to start the ball rolling.
Agreed.
Okay.
So what's a good timeframe for people to read this and get the information out, publicize it and say you have to turn it in by 60 days?
That would should be plenty of time.
November 1. I wasn't far off, see? Gives a couple of weeks to notify, three or four weeks for people to write and get the forms if they need them. Do you need action from us on that tonight?
I think direction is...
I don't think so.
It's really...
I think it's one of his directions, so yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Wide-open range, 60 days from the time that you actually get the information together.
Okay. That may take a little while because I'm going to be going most to next week, so...
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Is there any public comment on that issue? No? Okay. Closing public comment and bringing it back to new business. I'm going to do a little juggling here because we have some guests with young guys that look like they're ready to go eat a pizza. These gentlemen are here for my emergency item. And once again, I'll just introduce this. Some of the employees of Pelican Bay State Prison have asked me to write a letter to our governor and to our state legislators and whoever else will listen to provide support to the proposal of not taking their shifts to 12-hour days, possibly 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, reducing from three shifts to two shifts. And the benefit, you know, the first benefit that you would think would be, you know, saving the money, a lot of money for the state, but I'm going to let these guys give a little 30-second summary of what the benefit or non-benefit would be. The reason that it's important to this council and to our community is that, as you see, the three men standing before us are employees of the facility, but they are coaches and parents and volunteers. And they're worried that this proposal will take many of those people off that list. They will no longer be able to coach Little League or football or volunteer for our fire department or whatever the case may be. So thanks for being here. How was practice, boys?
It was good.
Good?
Thank you for inviting us. Appreciate that. You cut our 30-minute second proposal down to about 10 seconds. Did a pretty good job there. Basically, what it is that she outlined there is they're proposing the shifts out there to go to two 12-hour shifts. The proposal that we have and Mitch Long has a proposal is an eight-to-eight shift, which would really take all of us and many more of the employees out of Pelican Bay, out of the public as far as coaches for Little League, football, basketball, cheerleading, you name it, for any sport, where we've got easily a couple hundred volunteers out there for that, including firefighters, search and rescue, deputy sheriffs. We've got a list of several of them and I know there's a lot more than we have on that list there. But my name's Mike Matts, by the way. This is Sean Harper and this is Mitch Jones. Sean's a very active coach in both football and Little League and Mitch is the treasurer for Little League. And we have several letters here of support for, from Little League and other organizations. Mr. Alexander has supported us and wrote a letter and sent it to the governor already, so...
Really, there's not much that we can ask of you guys to do other than for your support and recognizing what we do at Pelican Bay and how important the people are, not for what we do out there, but are for our community. We do a ton in the community and my first go-around up here was back in 92 and I remember all the activities and the sporting activities, the sports that the kids played in. We were just kind of very mediocre. Well, since I've returned to the area as of three years ago, our sports, our youth activities, whether it's Grange, 4-H, they're thriving right now. And I look around at who's involved as activity leaders and it's a lot of us out there at the Bay. And I'm not saying that we do everything, but if we go to a five-to-five shift or an eight-to-eight shift, we're out of play. It's no longer conducive for us to work with these young kids, you know. The shift just will not allow it. And the proposal that's on the table, at least from our perspective, it's going to get shoved down our throats. And that just scares the heck out of me, not only as a coach, but as a parent. You know, I want my kids to grow up in this community and experience the athletic successes that our kids have over probably the past 10 years. And that scares all of us out there. And like Mike said, we put a big list of names together and it's quite extensive. All that we do, and like I said before, it just pulls us right out of play. So really, we're just looking for a voice from you guys, another voice other than our own to send to Sacramento and say, hey, you know what? We're not like the other state prisons in California. We're a rural community. This community does rely on the people out of Pelican Bay to help out in this community on volunteer services and with that kind of an aspect. So we're just looking for our voice to be heard and hoping you guys will support us and back us.
Did you want to say something, Mitch?
He's pretty much wrapped it up really well, what he said. I mean, volunteer services from Pelican Bay, I mean, is about the community, is everywhere if you look around at any volunteer services and, you know, that's when the prison came in, that's what they were looking at is the help that would come from that. And then if we take the help from there, you know, we're kind of going back on what we brought to the community in the first place by staying where we're in prison there, but we'll have all the support system to do.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Also, the 12-hour shift isn't a set day off, regular days off, it's a rotating 12-hour shift. So this week, we're going to have these days off, next week, we'll have those days off and it's going to continually change. And then every third week, I think it comes back and starts over again. So we can't plan football practices, we can't go to any of our children's football games. They say we'll have every other weekend off is what they're proposing, so it's constantly changing.
Over the course of a four-month season though, I mean, how many days does that take you out of play?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mentioned that earlier when I was bringing it to the council for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have any, thank you. Do I have any public comment? If you guys want to take a seat. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Alexander?
I actually didn't know that this was on the agenda tonight, but I was at the CASA golf tournament when these gentlemen approached me and asked for my support. Excuse me.
Could you state your name for the record?
John Alexander of Crescent City.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bottom line is when you look around, and you all know this as well as I do, Kelly, especially you that are so concerned with our youth, when I look around at some of the endeavors that I'm involved in with Little League baseball, junior football, you look at cheerleading, you look at Doug Plack's program with Explorers, you look across the board in this community, everywhere you look, especially with our youth, also Pelican Bay, the Fishing Association for their kids, the men and women of Pelican Bay, their community involvement, they are inextricably intertwined with the, with benefits to this society, especially with our youth. My understanding is that this proposed 12-hour shift would extend only, and correct me if I'm wrong, gentlemen, only to three prisons in the state, being High Desert in Susanville, one other is in Pelican Bay, which leads me to believe, number one, it's the offset, what it's going to do to help the budget is miniscule. But especially when you look at what these men and women bring to our community, the small amount that's going to do to offset the budget crisis in this state is immeasurable compared to the detriment it is going to wreak upon our community. I think it would be horrendous for this to go through. I would strongly urge you to do everything you can to tell the warden and tell the governor that this needs to be stopped and terminated at this point. Wes Chesbrough was here yesterday, or excuse me, Saturday morning, and he has voiced his support of the men and women of Pelican Bay as well. I would strongly urge you and request you as a citizen of this community to do so as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay. The, yeah, they've chosen three prisons in the state of California. The one, I think you said, was Silicon Valley?
Salinas Valley.
Salinas Valley? Thank you. It's a little opposite end, huh? And they're going to start there. Pelican Bay would be the second and Susanville, third. And the, I was talking to Mike about it today, the offset of the number of people that would actually be retiring is 60 or 70 to save 90 positions or to remove 90 positions. And so the offset is really only about 20 and it just absolutely would do nothing but hurt our community. So I don't have a letter put together, I was given this information today. I will give Mr. Butler a copy. He can make a copy available to all of you in your boxes tomorrow. And we will work very quickly to put together a letter of support if this council chooses to.
I, our whole entire community depends on volunteers and so I would like to make a motion and I'm very proud of you guys and I thank you very much. So I'd make a motion that we authorize the mayor to send a letter to our governor and legislators in order to stop the pressing of changing the hours for you guys and keep you helping our families and volunteering for our community. And thank you again.
I would second that.
Okay. Is there any further comment? Okay. Could you, no, I don't need to pull the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five to zero. We'll hopefully have this to you by the end of the week.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Honestly, I appreciate you guys' support, but I don't know if we can stop it, but we just want a voice heard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, guys.
If you have, Mike, or if any of you have any questions, please feel free to call and we'll definitely help you with it.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. We're going to move back to item number 13. Consider and approve the appointment of Mr. Rick Nolan to the Crescent City Planning Commission. Is Mr. Taylor here this evening?
He's not. Mayor, I'll handle this. Mr. Taylor got a chance to go to a code enforcement training workshop.
Oh, good.
He got to go?
Yeah. Yeah. He was encouraged.
That's good because I was at the senior center at lunchtime today and the complaints from an entire table was about code enforcement.
Oh, uh-oh. Okay. Yeah, so he'll come back with all kinds of knowledge on that. Yeah, we wanted to, as you know, we've had a vacancy on the planning commission for a while and, you know, I'm kind of a political junkie, so I always like to apply famous political quotes or situations. I remember when, probably it was like the spring of 1992, Bill Clinton was emerging as the Democratic nominee for president and Hillary said, "With us, you get two for the price of one." With the Clintons, "We get two for the price of one with Sylvia Boss and Rick Nolan." Sylvia was our...
I don't know, she's kind of cuter than you are, Rick.
Sylvia was one of our most passionate, effective, consistent planning commission members for several years, just decided to transition into something else, I think, about maybe six to nine months ago. But now Rick has stepped forward, has been willing to kind of fill, I don't know if it's exactly her vacancy, but the vacancy we have now. And we're excited about that because of his background, his commitment to the community, his knowledge of a lot of things that will be very important to the planning commission's work. So we can, as, from the staff level, enthusiastically recommend his appointment. And he is here, as you obviously see, so if you have any questions of him, he's available, but we would recommend approval of his appointment effective immediately.
Thank you. Well, I'm just going to personally give a yes vote. I've worked with Rick on the Board of Directors for the Visitors Bureau for a couple of years and he's extremely pleasant to work with, always does his homework. And the fact that he worked for the park system and knows our community so well, I think will be a big benefit to our planning commission. So are, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I missed the connection. What is your connection to Sylvia Boss?
She is, I am her husband.
Oh.
I had to be careful how I worded that, but yeah, I'm her husband.
Okay.
I just know that I've seen Rick at many things in the community, in the city, of ten city meetings fairly regularly. And so I'd just move that we accept the planning commission's recommendation and appoint Rick Nolan for the commission, a position that expires May of 2011.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. I believe that Ms. Westfall had another question.
Yes, I did. Um, ah...
Can always ask questions.
I don't know you that well, but I like you. I've met you in several meetings. I like what I've heard you talk about. I want to know a little bit more about where you want to see our city go. How do you feel about tourism? Is that going to be a big part and play a big part in the planning commission in the future?
Obviously, I have a background in tourism, having worked for the National Park Service for 35 years and recently retiring. In addition to that, I sat on the first, or I was on the initial group that formed the Visitors Bureau here in 2006 and I've sat on that group since then. I'm very committed to tourism. I think tourism is one of the opportunities that we have right in front of us to build and develop our community economically. A good community should be diverse economically in a number of different industries, but certainly the tourism industry is right there for us to take advantage of and that would be one of my loudest voices on the planning commission.
I agree with you to the extent that we need diversity. Where do you see tourism in a hierarchy? You see it as number one, two, three?
At the present time, strike when the iron's hot. It is the one thing that we can take opportunity now for. There's small industry, there's other things that we could do over time to encourage a diverse, complex industry within, or different industries within a small rural community like this. But tourism, we have, we have a national park, we have a national forest, we have a national wildlife refuge, we have a national monument. We, the, most communities would just die to have one of those entities close to them. We have a richness of natural resources as well as cultural resources out there that we can, we can build upon to make this, to take advantage of bringing people here so they can have a quality experience, but also enrich our community by the spending that they do while they're here.
Have you ever lived in a tourist town?
Living in the National Park Service, I lived in national parks for 23 of the 35 years I worked for the National Park Service. So from the relationship of being a place that draws tourists, yes, I was in a park or yes, I was immediately adjacent to towns that lived off of tourists who came to parks.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'd like to remind us that we're actually considering a planning commissioner, not a tourism board member here, although Rick is especially qualified. But I just want to say that I've worked with him on the Visitor Bureau. I know him as a personal friend. He has the highest integrity. He's very talented and he has a great deal of service and passion to this community, which is what is going to help build this a stronger... which is what is going to help build this a stronger, better community.
I totally agree with your comments.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Welcome to the City of Crescent City Planning Commission, Mr. Nolan.
Thank you. I look forward to helping you all.
We look forward to hearing good things from you.
Thanks.
It's almost a volunteer position. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to number 14. Consider and provide direction to staff regarding city funding for public art projects. Mr. Butler.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Adam, Mayor, members of the council. You'll recall that back in March of this year, March 15th, and we actually included the staff report from that meeting in your agenda package, council had a discussion about the possibility of partnering, the city partnering with local artist groups to prepare grant applications for various public art projects. And the concept at that time was that our city planner would basically be an in-kind contribution of staff time. At that time, we had a full-time planner on staff, we were obviously paying her salary. She would allocate a certain amount of hours to working with local arts groups and seeking grant funds for public art. Shortly after that, as part of the budget, general fund budget balancing steps that we had to take to bring down our general fund shortfall for the new budget year, we had to make a decision to move away from a full-time planner position, at least for now. And that obviously took away the idea of using an in-house planner to do this grant writing. So, I was approached a couple of months ago by Harley Munger, who is here this evening. Harley is active in several local arts groups. He's most closely affiliated with the Elk Valley artisans. And he kind of asked, you know, where do we go from here now without an in-house planner? You know, is there some way that the city can have a role in assisting with applying for public art funds, public art grants? So, we've had a dialogue just internally with him. We've met with not only Harley, but some other folks from the arts community. And I wanted to kind of bring this whole question to the council tonight and get your sense of where you stand with regard to the city's role. I've, just before the meeting started, handed out just a real simple worksheet that I put together. If we were to use, for example, general fund city money to buy a block of a grant writer's time, and I will disclose that we have talked to Charlene Maisy about her availability. She doesn't have a whole lot of time to work on this, but she could block out a certain number of hours per year. What you would be looking at, I've just, and there's nothing magical about any of these numbers, but I gave you three options. One would be about 30 hours a year. Option B would be 50 hours a year. And then option C would be about 80 hours a year of dedicated time toward public art, seeking public art funds. And that would be the cost impact at 30 hours, 2,700 per year, at 50 hours a year, 4,500 per year, and then option C, 80 hours a year, would translate into 72 hours per year. That's at Charlene's current hourly rate. I do have, I probably can squeeze out of the planning budget at least the amount for the 30 hours a year level. We have a, when we went to the contract planner concept, we plugged a large chunk of money into the contract services line item in planning with the idea being that most of that will go to our PMC contract planner, Gary Pedroni. But I did build in some additional funds for special projects over and above basic planning services. And I think I can say, based on what I've seen, the trends I've seen so far during this fiscal year, that we could find, if it was the council's desire to go this route, I could at least find funds for that 30-hour-a-year level. You start talking about 80 hours a year, and then that gets a little more tricky. But a lot of it depends on what the council's attitude is about any public money, period, going toward this. I've also thrown an option D together that we've talked about with Harley, and that would be to direct me to work with the arts community. And so, I'm talking Elk Valley Artisans, Redwood Mural Society, Harbor Art Gallery, Talking Crow Studios, Barbara Burke and the Gallery of Arts and Culture. And I know I, I wasn't sure, I can never get in clear in my mind if it's DENACA, what the acronym for DENACA is, so I was scared to.
Deloitte Association for Cultural Awareness.
Okay. But they would obviously be players in this, I would think. To seek private sector funding to pay for a block of a grant writer's time. So, if the council's not comfortable with commitment of city funds at this time, you could direct me to pull all those players together, see if we can put together, you know, whether it's a fundraiser or individual members of these groups kicking in money, but trying to put together a fund that would buy a chunk of Charlene's time or whoever ended up being the grant writer. So, if it's just not a comfort level with city money at this time, you know, this is an alternative that you could look at. So, this is one of those cases where I think we all, I don't, it's hard to be, you know, being against public art, especially the high-quality art that we have in Crescent City so far, and we're getting more of all the time, it's kind of like being against apple pie or motherhood. I don't think any of us is against that. It's a question really of, you know, is the council comfortable at this point in a period of limited resources with allocating some resources for this project? I will tell you, and I think Mayor Proteam Burns is aware of this, and others maybe as well, there is some precedent for public funds going toward public art in Crescent City. We have traditionally budgeted about $2,500 a year for the Redwood Mural Society. We've been able to rationalize using redevelopment funds for that, and I think we're still safe with that. But that's basically for maintaining the murals that are in place in the redevelopment area. So, the past councils have voted to provide small amounts of funding for.
I think we gave $2,000 to the mural society.
Yeah, it's been in the 2,000 to 2,500 range for at least a couple of years that I've been up here. So, with that, I just kind of, again, I mentioned that Harley is with us tonight, he may wish to comment, but it's really more just kind of gauging the council's attitude at this point. And if there's not a comfort level for public funding, then I will work with these groups to try to put together some kind of a creative way to make it happen with private funding.
Well, that sounds nice, but your time is public money also.
That's true.
So, and I would much rather see your expertise in other areas be used to manage the city instead of looking for money for public art. On the other hand, I think it's, you know, definitely beautifies the community and is something that we can consider tonight. So, Harley, did you have anything you wanted to say to the council? I, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm not against this at all. I'm actually, I think it's a good idea, but I, I wonder what kind of public art the artisans are thinking about. And thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. I'm Harley Munger, resident in Deloitte County, Elk Valley Road. I don't know, I don't know where to start. 10 years ago, we started putting up public art in Crescent City. In the 10-year period, the youth and I have put up almost, what, $120,000 market value of art in this community. Most of it has come from grants, in fact, almost all of it has come from grants. Some has been donated from the Rotary, some is from pop. Most of it has been just grants. And we need a grant writer who knows what they're doing to help us out. And so, we came to the city to see if this could happen. I know it's financially difficult, but it's also, you know, difficult for us without one. Different forms of art, we're wide open on that. Whatever the city or bid we go for, we have, you know, artists, sculptures, performers, you know, they're out there, ready to go. We just need some sort of funding, and the funding can come from grants.
I love what you're doing on Third Street.
Okay, thank you.
On the wall. It's beautiful.
Yeah.
Okay.
That funding is all private funding through different individuals. We've been receiving $250 for every four foot. Market value of that is $2,500 for every four foot. So, we're just barely making enough to pay for materials.
Yeah. Thank you. So, is there going to be, let's say the council chose to choose option A or B tonight, and we hire a grant writer to assist, is there a, do you have like a group of people that person would work with? What's the structure look like?
We're trying to form a group along with Rod. And what I would like to see is the group get together with Rod on an ongoing basis just to air things out, get ideas, form a direction, and possibly go through an organization such as Bid to sort out the differences. So, it's not, it's not just an individual coming forward with a project, but they're going through some sort of an organization, some sort of a process.
So, then you would anticipate all of the art being located within the Bid district?
No. No, not at all.
Okay.
No.
So, I think it would probably need to come to the city council?
Yeah.
I'm guessing. Unless there's like.
Or a planning, or a planning commission.
Planning commission. That's a better idea.
Yeah.
Okay, and so, but the art would be located within the city limits?
Within city limits.
Okay.
That's one thing I laid down the law on, that if it's going to, if there is going to be any city funding, you know, that it would need to be going toward exclusively the city limits.
Do you have a professional quote for that, too?
Oh, my, oh, the Hillary Clinton, "Two for the President."
Never mind. Politicians quote.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any public comment? Nope. Okay. Council, what's your pleasure?
I'll have some comments.
Sure.
I think city staff can help with writing. I don't think city staff should help with researching it, because artists can find grants. I think they need to have help maybe writing or with structure. So, I don't think we ought to allocate city time to necessarily research that out unless something comes across somebody's desk and it's, obviously it deals with the arts, then it can be forwarded to whoever. And I know that there's the city, and then there's the RDA. So, that, that area may not necessarily always be contiguous with, with city limits. So, I just want to bring that up, that it's, if you can use RDA money, and it doesn't have to be, you know, just within city limits, but also, and I don't have, know this answer, but if it's countywide, would the county be interested at all in looking into this? And I don't know if you've talked to Mr. Serena or not about the idea of the county.
Not yet, no, but that's certainly something we could do.
They also have, not money, but staff time, which is money. I'm not trying to say they're different, but they also have staff time available also.
Mm-hmm.
And the city is within the county, so.
Jerry Hemmingson, Chair, and I just were emailing each other about getting together and putting some sort of an agenda together for another joint city-county meeting sometime in October.
Great.
So, we could definitely put that on the list. See if they wanted to cooperate in the future with us.
Yes, I have a couple of comments and questions. First, Harvey, you and the artisans in this valley have done an amazing job.
Harley, Harley.
Harley, sorry. Harley Munger. I'm a big supporter of the arts. My question is, Charlene, have you experience in grant writing for public arts projects?
I have to think about that. I believe that I've done a grant. I believe one of the sources that Mr. Munger mentioned when we met was the Humboldt Area Foundation, and I have done grants through them before. They're, they're, I don't want to say every grant is, is like a grant, but the purpose of the grant isn't necessarily make it more or less difficult, it's usually the requirements of the funder that, that make it hard to get or not hard to get. So, I have had experience with doing similar types of projects.
Do you remember the amount of the grant?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Rod?
Charlene?
I.
Well, actually, while she's up here, if you have another question for her, go ahead.
I just wanted to follow up. I was just wondering if you think 30 hours, you could get the job done? We kind of talked about that at the meeting, and it depends entirely on what the project or the grant requires you to write to. I feel comfortable that the folks that are going to be asking for this help realize that the more that they can provide upfront, the less time it'll take. One of the questions was about how it would be structured, and I was clear that I don't do grant research for the most part, and I would not be able to, to do it for this. So, that they would, if they brought something to us, then I would be more than happy to help with it, but not grant finding. And then any direction, I would not work unless I got direction from Rod.
Yes.
Because it's under the contract with the city.
And also, Charlene, I think I may be wrong, but don't a lot of grants have an indirect cost that we can charge the grant for an indirect cost for administration?
Some. Oh, if we, if we are the applicant, and, yeah, yeah.
Because I don't think they have to be the applicant. If we're writing the grant, that can be an indirect cost charged to the grant.
Sometimes they will.
Sometimes.
Sometimes they won't. It depends on, on the funding. Some of them, they say, anything prior to the award, you can't charge. Some of them will allow grant writing fees. It just depends. So, yeah, there is potential for that.
Well, and then you have to follow up with providing the clothes out of the grant and the documentation as well. So, those come afterwards.
Well, who would administer the grant once it was awarded, I think would be a question that would have to be answered with each opportunity, because if the city were going to be expected to administer it, then that would, they would have to get some funding to do that. If the, because a lot of these organizations are private nonprofits, they're perfectly eligible to be an applicant on their own. If they just want assistance writing it, and they're going to manage it on their own, then they would be responsible for doing all of that.
More questions to be answered?
Well, I just, for me, I, I think it's a really great opportunity for us to beautify our city and surrounding areas. I went to Medford over the weekend, and not just the mall, but the downtown area, and they have some beautiful artwork that we don't have here. And we are, we are doing these types of things, but that's a real boon for our tourism opportunities, because people come here to see different types of beautiful art, and the murals are one of the ways that we're expanding our opportunities to bring in more tourists. So, thank you, Harley, for doing that, because your murals are very beautiful. So, we do have an opportunity to improve on our tourism and also to beautify our city. So, I think it's a great investment in our city, not just for beautifying it, which I'm totally in favor of, but also for bringing in more tourists. So, I think it's a great idea, and I, I would go for option B myself, because I think you need more time.
And where would you like that to come from?
Can we?
The planning?
From the planning department?
Yeah, the contract services line item in planning.
Because we did make that commitment back in March, so we agreed to that.
Can I offer my two cents worth that I don't like having it coming out of the general fund unless we find an offset to decrease whatever amount we agree on? I like the idea of it coming out of the RDA.
I think Rod, can you, based on, let's say, let's say we allocated a budget of up to $5,000. I'm just picking that out of the air. Could, based on what project they brought forward, could we then decide if it would come out of the planning line, contract line item or the RDA, based on where the project would be located?
Yeah, I think that's actually a fine. Yeah, I think that's actually a fine way of doing it. And I can double check on, you know, the question is, can redevelopment funds be used for a grant writer, which is basically what this is? And, I'm not gonna sit here and say no for sure, I think it's doubtful, but we can at least follow up. And we can look, project by project, you know, at whether there might be some other funding source other than general fund. So I think I can take the direction, you know, of X amount of money or X amount of hours, depending on how you word a motion that would be forthcoming. And then, I think I get the gist of the council's direction, that if there's a way to find a way to do it with funds other than general fund, that should be the preference.
Okay. Do you have any thoughts, Charles?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I do, I believe in, in the notion of, uh, public and private partnerships. And, and I've seen firsthand, uh, in San Diego, where, uh, the arts were a major benefit to the development of the sense of community and culture of, of the community. So, uh, I, I think everybody can benefit from it, and, uh, it's, it's a relatively small gesture, uh, but I think it's about commitment. And, uh, if Mr. Butler, uh, can, uh, see his way clear for option A, I could fully support option A, um, at this time.
I can go with option A also, especially if we put the caveat on, in there that if we can expend other dollars, other than general fund, especially RDA, or, that that would even sweeten the pot as far as not dipping into general fund dollars.
Yes.
Okay. Did I take public comment?
I think you did.
I did? I'll have to start keeping better track. Okay, well, um, the council has the-
I'll move, we go with option A for thirty hours, not to exceed $2,700, that it has to come back to the council, and that all avenues other than general fund be explored, uh, for funding this, and it'll be brought back to council.
I would second that.
Okay. Uh, could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Slert?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Westfall?
I'm sorry, can you read that? I was out of the room.
I didn't type it out, sorry.
Let, let me restate the motion. Uh, it is for thirty hours a year, up to $2,700. And anything further should, um, anything outside of the general fund should be explored for funding.
And that would be brought back before the city can, before-
Before the council, before-
Or a decision.
And can I clarify that? Do you mean, uh, if we go over thirty hours, it comes back for more? Or, what would we be coming back to the council on?
I think what-
The decision to spend the money.
Oh, okay.
Okay, yes.
And what pot it's gonna be taken out of. For example, we may find a way to spend sixty hours and still not have it exceed $2,700.
Right.
Good point.
Okay.
Or, you have so much, so much success with the original thirty hours, and you find that there's a fund that we can use out of RDA to further a project along, and you bring that back to the council. That's just another option.
Did, did you vote, Donna?
Yes, I did.
Did I?
Sorry.
Uh, no, you actually did. Thank you, Mayor Shalom.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now you voted.
Thank you. Not my vote.
I lost my way there.
Okay. Congratulations, good luck, and, uh, Mr. Butler will be in touch with you. Thank you.
Okay. Number fifteen, consider and approve the city's written response to the, uh, 2009, 2010 Delarue County Grand Jury Report and take action as necessary and appropriate, Mr. Butler.
Thank you, Mayor. Madam Mayor, members of the council. Uh, each year at this time, the city is required to respond to any recommendations that have been made by the county grand jury as part of their annual governmental review process. Last year, you'll recall that this was a major effort for the city. One of the primary focus areas of the grand jury for the 2008, 2009 grand jury panel was investigation of questions and general, uh, topics surrounding the wastewater treatment plant. So they did a lot of work over the course of that year. Uh, staff spent a lot of, uh, resources, city resources, in responding to their questions. Uh, we actually took the step of contracting with Michael Young to produce what has proven to be a very valuable document, which is kind of a history of wastewater treatment in Crescent City going back to the 1950s. And we've used that document at a number of, uh, in a number of, uh, venues throughout this past year. This year's grand jury effort, uh, the, the main focus appeared to be on fire agencies. They did a lot of work, uh, looking at the fire agencies throughout the county. They did a little bit of follow-up on the wastewater treatment plant and some conflict of interest form questions, but it was really very minor compared to last year's, the number of recommendations that we had to respond to last year. Uh, last year, right around the same time, early September, the council approved the city's written response to the grand jury, and that was submitted to the grand jury on time. Uh, California Penal Code, Section 933, gives us ninety days from the date of the release of the report to file our written response. Put together a written staff report that has bolded the recommendations that were made by the grand jury. And then under that, I'm, I've got a proposed city response. And since there was so little this year, my recommendation would be that this, this staff report would basically be our response. You know, assuming there are no major changes by the, the council tonight, we would actually submit this as our response later this week to the grand jury. And I don't know what level of detail you want me to go into in terms of the recommendations. They had only one, it was more of a comment on the wastewater treatment plan had to do with just making sure that we're enforcing the conflict of interest filings by all policymakers and city government. That is continuing to happen. Um, they actually made a recommendation for the next grand jury, that the current grand jury requests that the 2010, 2011 grand jury will follow up on the response from the FPPC and share its contents with the city manager and the city council. So that's really more of an internal grand jury item. And then they had some comments about the volunteer fire department. Couple of them had to do with conflict of interest filings for the volunteers. Um, we respect the recommendations, and we know that that has been a focus of the grand jury for all the agencies that they follow or that they investigate. But we personally don't agree that volunteers should be required to file Form 700s and conflict of interest forms, uh, unless there's clear documentation that they are involved in decision-making processes about purchasing and financial management, which our volunteers are not. So we're, we respectfully disagree with the recommendations in those areas, and we've stated the reasons in the response. And then they made a comment or a recommendation about considering the feasibility of city property owners paying a special assessment fee to support their fire services. And I think where they were going, and I actually met with the, the two ladies from the grand jury that were focused on the fire service agencies, and just from those meetings, I think where they were going was, the residents of Fire Protection District currently pay a $42 a year assessment that helps support the Crescent Fire Protection District. Currently, city property owners do not pay an assessment fee. So, I guess as an equity argument, maybe the city property owners should also be paying a fee to help support their services. We don't see the need for that at this time. Obviously, I've made the comment a few, several times in public meetings that the biggest challenge for Crescent City and a lot of cities in the next ten or fifteen years is gonna be how we pay for public safety services. And so, we can't guarantee that we won't eventually have to look at something like that. But at this point in time, um, we feel like our, our general fund is in sufficient, good shape that we don't have to go to the voters and property owners and ask for any kind of a supplement for fire services. So we're, again, thanking them for their recommendation, but, but not moving to implement that at this time. So that was pretty much it, as far as what I could glean from recommendations on the grand jury report. And much, much simpler process for us this year, and it-
I have a quick question. I agree with you on not making volunteers, uh, go through, um, the conflict of interest forms, 700 forms. However, Bob, when we set up the, um, the Fire, um, Board of Directors Group, um, they are making that, do they have a board of directors that makes decisions on how our grant is spent?
Yes, that's part of what they do. We're, we're, in an ideal world, they will provide us with a certain amount of detail when they request their annual grant. And so then that kind of acts like a budget. It's, it's the purpose of the grant, and then they have to kinda stay within it. But obviously, there's decisions at a level of detail even below that, so.
So I just, you might wanna consider that. Um, I know they have a treasurer and maybe a secretary, or, they had to set up some form of, of hierarchy to, for us to be able to pass that grant money on to them. Um, and, so I don't know if you thought about that?
Yeah, that's a good point.
Because that was a new thing for the city, when Bob and I worked on that.
So the idea would be to require their directors, not their-
If we required it at all.
Not your individual.
I was just saying, they, they do have those, those, I think there's three or four-
Yeah, officers.
Members, officers, and, um, you know, maybe just ask the question as to how they, what relationship they have in the decision-making process for that money. That's the only comment that I had to share. Anything else from the council?
Yes. Uh, first I have a question from our city attorney, Bob Black. The issue of secrecy, it's my understanding that grand jurors are sworn to secrecy for the rest of their life. They can't talk about anything that happened in the grand jury room. So, that's my understanding.
I believe that is correct. I don't know about the rest of their life type thing, but, yeah, I think, yeah, I think basically that is correct.
Unless it's a lawsuit and they're summoned or subpoenaed.
Right.
Okay. How about, uh, people who put in complaints and are there as witnesses? What's their secrecy, um, quotient?
The grant, well, people who submit complaints, I don't think there's any requirement that they have to keep that a secret. The grand jurors are supposed to keep secret who they got the complaints from or what the complaints are. Um, but the, uh, when, when witnesses go in front of the grand jury, it's up to the grand jury to admonish the witnesses as to the secrecy of what's taking place. And I'm assuming that they always do that, but it's possible that they skip it sometimes or they don't care about a particular line of questioning. And so if they, if they don't admonish the witness, I'm not sure that the secrecy is required. Does that make sense? In other words, they, the grand jury itself sets the secrecy limit when they bring somebody in.
Okay, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, people that I'm aware of who have been, been witnesses have had to sign some paperwork. And it was my understanding that after the grand jury report came out, they were free to talk about what they related to the grand jury. Is that correct or not? Do you know?
Does this have to do with our topics right now?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Uh, I don't, I know that witnesses are frequently, but I don't know that they're always asked to sign a secrecy statement. And I also don't know exactly what the terms of that are, but what I, I don't think, by my recollection, I don't think it says that when the grand jury report comes out, then they're free to talk. I don't think it says that. Now, maybe some do and some don't. Maybe they change it for whatever they're investigating.
Okay, uh, here are my comments. Several, many constituents have come to me and said that, uh, they complained to me rather than complained to the grand jury, and here's why. They think that the grand jury is another little pool of corruption. And that some of the members of the grand jury were biased and personally motivated to make and see a certain outcome. And what, uh, leads me to believe that this may be correct is that, in the grand jury report, it says that during the course of this year, ten members felt it necessary to resign, which sounds like a huge amount of resignations.
So, let me, let me clarify your question. You think that because ten people resigned from grand jury, they are corrupt?
No, that's not-
Could you reframe your question? Because that's, that was my perception.
Um, I'm aware of complaints submitted to the grand jury that were not in the grand jury report. And so therefore, uh, people have complained that they think that the deck is stacked. And this is not worth the paper it's printed on. So those are my comments.
So, okay.
Sometimes a grand jury gets complaints that, that are not warranted, so I would say that the grand jury sometimes, uh, looks at complaints that are not, uh, worthy of being investigated by the grand jury.
This is true.
And they may also have previously been, uh, inquired, uh, and they were satisfied with the responses at that time.
So that, that goes back to my question, that it doesn't have anything to do with, or it does have anything to do with the, um, topics at hand?
I would, I would go ahead and move, but even before public comment, that we accept Rod's, uh, statements to the grand jury on their questions and comments, and that he go ahead and forward this to the grand jury to make our ninety-day deadline.
I would second that.
Can we, uh, give him the authority to, uh, make a change if he feels that the officers of our fire department should, um, be required to file the Form 700s?
The only thing I would say is that if he, he can't agree to have them file a Form 700, but he could agree that that matter will come back to the, come up before the city council for amendment of our conflict of interest code.
That's what I, I, yeah, thank you for clarifying what I meant.
I'll, that, I could make that part of my motion.
It's why we pay them big money. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any public comment? Seeing-
I was pleased that, with what the grand jury said this year.
Okay. Uh, seeing none, uh, please, no, I don't need to pull the vote. I'm all confused tonight. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And I, I, I say yes. And just as a comment after, um, I served on the grand jury, and it's a long tedious and, um, thankless job, so.
And I think part of the letter should be a thank you, because they do serve many, many hours.
Yeah.
So, you know, thank you in there, too.
Yeah. It's interesting that people that volunteer are corrupt. Okay, number sixteen. Consider a request from Delarue Ambulance for a letter of support related to Delarue Ambulance rate increase, uh, request.
I'm going to recuse myself, uh, because Delarue Ambulance is my client at my work. So Mr.-
So I will take this over. Uh, this has come before us as item sixteen. Rod, you wanna, and then Mr. Pritchett, I'm sure is gonna talk too, so.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Burns. Uh, yes, just, uh, as we were preparing the agenda package late last week, we did receive a request from Delarue Ambulance to bring this before the council. Uh, they are faced with, uh, the need to raise their rates for some reasons that, uh, the, the one-page sheet that they provided outlined, and we'll also, uh, allow Mr. Pritchett to talk about that. And they wanted to bring those, just bring the general issue up for you, with the idea that the council consider the possibility of writing a letter of support to the County Board of Supervisors, which is the body that makes this rate increase decision. And we don't know if that's something that you'll be interested in or not, but we wanted to at least give, uh, you the opportunity to consider it. So with that, I will turn it over to John Pritchett, who's the general manager of Delarue Ambulance. Pritchett, who's the general manager of Delnor Ambulance. He's got a brief presentation for you.
Thank you, and thank you, members of the council, for, for hearing me out. I'll try to keep my comments brief and to the point. Delnor Ambulance is requesting a letter of support from the council to raise our, our public rate, unfortunately, by a substantial level. The supervisors have been considering this matter for several months. We understand that this is a difficult decision for them, and your backing would be greatly appreciated. Delnor Ambulance has traditionally requested a rate increase every three years or so of about 10 to 15 percent. So why so much more this year? Well, there's two reasons. First, the California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation in Sacramento sliced payments to medical providers such as Delnor Ambulance by 60 percent. And that was at the first of the year. Second, Medicare reimbursements for very rural providers, the so-called super rural providers, such as Delnor Ambulance, was cut 25 percent for the first six months of 2010. As a result, Delnor Ambulance was forced to make major cuts in expenses to weather this storm. For the first time in our company's history, we were forced to lay off four employees and cut back service from four staffed units to three. For the second year in a row, no raises were given. Maintenance has been deferred. We have stopped our charitable contributions, and we have eliminated our employee bonus program. Just to name a few items. But frankly, it hasn't been enough. Thus, the decision to request the substantial increase to our public rate. Now, I'll resist the urge to dive deep into the wonderfully complex and entertaining world of ambulance billing, but here's what I, what I can share with you. The significant majority of our revenue comes from two sources, Medicare and Medi-Cal. We have no control over what they pay us. Medicare will pay us about $450 per call. Medi-Cal will pay about $125 per call. Any Delnor Ambulance rate increase will have minimal impact on Medicare patients and little, if any, impact on Medi-Cal patients. A rate increase will impact those with health insurance and those patients who we call private pays. It is very important to note that 80 percent of the revenue from a rate increase will come from insurance companies such as Blue Cross, Blue Shield, Delta, and the like. Without a substantial rate increase, Delnor Ambulance will be forced to make more cuts, drastic cuts, cuts that will have an impact on the residents of Crescent City. Will be forced to consider eliminating employee benefits such as health insurance and our employee retirement plan. We may be forced to close Station 2 in Fort Dick, meaning longer response times to outlying areas, meaning crews in Crescent City will be away from the Crescent, Crescent City station for longer periods of time. And the worst-case scenario is cutting another shift of employees and operating our service at the contracted minimal levels. Any rate increase will not produce a windfall for Delnor Ambulance. Indeed, what we are seeking this year is enough to, enough of a revenue boost that will allow us to catch up on our outstanding bills, cover debt, service cost, and to begin to replenish, replenish some of our reserve accounts for new equipment, accounts that we were forced to raid this year. Thank you for your time and attention. I'll be happy to answer any questions that I can.
Council, any questions of John?
So you, you brought this before the board, and it's their decision, basically, to, with the contract that they have with you, is that correct?
That is correct. It's their call. Under contract, they, there's set levels of service for the entire county. They make the decision on what our rate increase would be.
And they, they're just having a tough time making that decision?
It's a tough decision to make, because it is a large number. We originally requested a 50 percent rate increase, which is substantial, no doubt about that. And so we're, we're in talks now about what that level should be. It's, it's, I do not envy them. They have certain responsibilities. We believe that a substantial rate increase is warranted and, frankly, needed, especially after three years.
And I, I believe that you brought it before the board. Was it last year or the year before, or?
No, this is, our last rate increase was in 2007.
Seven, okay.
That was at the same time that, well, it was 2007, yes.
Okay. And so you believe that a letter of support from us will be beneficial to the board making their decision?
I, I have no doubt that the members of the board of supervisors respect the opinion of the Crescent City City Council.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I would just offer that I, you know, it's a, this seems to be a direct reflection of the current economy and the hardships associated therewith, and it seems to be a trickle-down effect. One concern I have is that you indicate the, the insurance companies would pay 80 percent of the cost-
That is correct.
-of the increase.
Yes.
And, and I think ultimately, we all pay for that. When, when the insurance companies increase their payments, then they have to look back to the people that fund them. And so I think it's the user that ultimately gets hit with the trickle-down, and, and you're in the middle of that, it sounds like.
Agreed. The one benefit, to, to use that word in a appropriate sense, is that the assessment is spread out among the entire insurance group. When I say it's 80 percent, that means that the private pays, those people who don't have insurance are a fairly small number because of the California system with Medi-Cal. Unfortunately, Medi-Cal pays about one quarter to, about less than one quarter of the cost to run a call. And so that burden is shared by the ambulance company and primarily the insurance companies. It's, it's a crazy system, but it's the one we live with.
And then ultimately, it's affecting the response time and/or the public safety.
We've had to eliminate one staff, one, one ambulance. We were at four fully-staffed ambulances on duty 24/7. That fourth unit was mostly a basic life support unit handling transfers such as a non-emergency transfer from Settler Coast back to Crescent Convalescent Hospital, or transfer from Settler Coast to the airfield. We've had to eliminate that shift. So yes, it has had a detriment on the community.
John, any questions?
This is a hard one for me, because you provide an essential service. On the other hand, we've used your service and we're still paying on that. I, I was just floored when I got your bill. I thought when we bought a membership, we were covered. I thought between that and then our insurance, we were covered, and didn't realize, you know, how much more was going to be out of pocket. If I had to do it over again, knowing that in non-life-threatening circumstances, I would probably call the cab company before calling your company, because I can't afford your company. But when it comes to life-threatening circumstances, I would want your company. So I feel very divided about this. Very divided.
If I may, ma'am. I can tell you that Delnor Ambulance's rates, currently, we did a survey of 30 companies and counties from, from around the state and, and in southern Oregon. We're at the, about the 33rd percentile. We're, we're two-thirds the way down the list. With even a 50 percent raise, we would be at about two-thirds the way up the list. We're certainly not trying to get rich. The, one thing about an ambulance company that's different than, say, a doctor, is that we can't choose our patients. A doctor in private practice could say, "I don't want to see Medi-Cal patients," yes, or, yeah, Medi-Cal patients, because the reimbursement rate is so low. Or they may say, "We don't want to see Medicare patients because the reimbursement rate really isn't that much better. We only want patients that have group health insurance. We don't have that option." People call us 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and say, "Please come." And we, we arrive, and our crews do not worry at all about the patient's ability to pay. And we take them to the hospital and treat them the best that we can, and give them the, the skills that we've developed over the years with our highly-trained and passionate people. And what you have to pay for is the fact that you do have three crews available 24/7, because you never know when there's going to be three calls or four calls at, at the same time, or a multi, a multi-patient accident on 101.
John, on Blue Cross, Blue Shield, Delta, the major providers, it, I don't know this, is there a max that they pay for an ambulance and then?
They'll usually pay reasonable and customary costs.
Okay.
Good luck trying to-
Figure out what that is.
That's nailing a wall to a jello, nailing jello to the wall.
Right.
Every insurance company has their own. You may be liable for 60, 70, 80, 90 percent of the copay. You may have a Cadillac plan that pays for everything.
Depends. Okay. Any other questions with John?
John, what percentage of calls do you get from the city residents?
You know, I've never figured that out. I could give you a guess. I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to take a guess.
I bet it's almost a percentage of our population. Just guessing, because I don't think we're that much different than, than the general population of the county. If you take the prison into account, you know, I know they do those, and then the convalescent home is, and so.
I don't know. I, I see the ambulance across the street from my house an X. or B. and N. amount of times.
Well, if you, if you take into account the old hotel, the, and, and the sir- Thank you. And, and then all the low-income houses.
Yeah.
It may be a bit more, but I don't know if it's-
I would guess that it's a bit more than the, than the percentage of population, simply because this-
Density.
The density and the age of the, of the community, I think is a bit higher.
Are we an older city?
So I've been told. But we're still vibrant and active.
Oh.
That would, I, I can try to track that down for you. That might be a, a computer program that we can, we can find for you.
Any other questions with John? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comment? Bill's got a comment.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Bill Lonsdale again. It would be good, in my opinion, if your council determines upfront before you decide on a letter of support, what it is you're supporting. I think we're blessed with the ambulance services that we have here in the county and in the city. One of the great things that, when I moved here, we found that if you join up with an ambulance service, if you, and pay your annual membership, that the ambulance service committed to accepting whatever your insurance companies provided as total payment for the ambulance service. As far as I knew, until Mrs. Westfall's question, that was what I was expecting from both of the ambulance services that we subscribe to. So I think it's important that we get down here on the public record, for the, the thousands of people, or hundreds of people, who are members of this particular ambulance service and the others, you know, what is the deal? Are we, are we paying our membership for only part of what we thought we were getting, or are we going to get what we were promised when we signed up, which was, you get your annual membership, you maintain your annual, annual membership, and we'll accept your insurance company's payment as total payment for the ambulance service? So I'd appreciate it if your council can get that out on the public record before you decide to send a letter of support. Thank you.
Okay, any other public comment?
Richard Adenia, once again, from, from Crescent City. I don't have, I'm not going to speak for, against Delnor Ambulance, but they're a great company, because I've seen them in action several times. But I was kind of surprised that the last speaker didn't talk about constitutional rights. You know, we as citizens in Crescent City, we can't vote for an ambulance company. The board of supervisors votes for it. We have no say in it. We can write a letter supporting the ambulance company, like the county wrote a letter supporting that they want to say in our water, but we can't vote for an ambulance company. And I think that's pretty ironic that we can't do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? During that, I'm going to close. Public comment, bring it back to the council. What's your pleasure?
I agree with the last speaker that we, we aren't allowed to vote on this, but I do think that the ambulance is an important service that we do have in the community. And with that, I'll make a motion that we write a letter of support.
Do you want to talk about what's in the letter of support, or just a general letter of support, that it's viable and that we need to keep it going and that-
Yeah.
I don't want to put words in your mouth, but-
No, that, that, that it's an important service in the community and that we urge, well, just that we, let's see, it doesn't really say what they, what they're asking necessarily, but that we support the, the service and that we believe it's a very important service and that we'd like to keep it in the community. I don't know if anybody else wants to put something to that effect and to, to the board of supervisors? I don't know. It doesn't really say what they're asking necessarily.
Well, John may address that, but I'm, I'm assuming they're asking, as they asked the board of supervisors, for the 50 percent increase in their base rates. That's their first request. I would guess, just listening to this.
Ideally, 50 percent would be a wonderful number, but the term we're using right now is substantial. And we think that, that carries a significant amount of weight. We're working with the county on some serious number crunching to try to come up with a, a number that works for them and works for us. 50's, 50's great, but a substantial increase would be sufficient in terms of verbiage.
Substantial, I, I, because I believe that they're going to make their decision regardless of what we say, but we support a substantial increase in order to keep your, your ambulances on the streets. How does that sound?
Well, I won't support a substantial increase. That's how it sounds.
That we keep, that, keep the ambulance service as it's now stands. How does that sound?
Okay.
Could John address the issue that Mr. Lonsdale raised, what the membership deal-
If you could. I don't know if you have that at your fingertips, or?
Our membership program is for $20 a year. If you have group health insurance, if you have a health insurance plan, after the deductible is met, we waive your copay cost. I'm unaware, and I cannot comment for HIPAA reasons on any, on councilperson's Westfall situation. I can tell you that we have 3,000, more than, about 3,000 memberships, and there's about, we figure about two and a half people per membership, so 7, 8,000 people. We routinely get letters of thank you from folks on this. They think it's a great program. I'd be happy to, if councilperson Westfall would like to contact me tomorrow, I'd be happy to research her situation and find out what the, what the situation is.
Because some, some insurances have deductibles, and you meet that first?
Yeah. And the program is, is guided by, by the federal government. They set the rules. We just have to live with them.
Okay. So what we have now is a motion on the table to send a letter of support for Delno, Delnor Ambulance to the board of supervisors, asking that they take all due diligence and really look at a substantial raise to keep services in, for, for residents in Crescent City. Is that-
I hope that addresses Mr. Lonsdale. Perhaps he could get a hold of the ambulance company if he has any other questions regarding his personal services.
Does that answer, does that, is that your?
Yeah, that's my motion.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I guess I, I have a problem with the word substantial.
Okay.
Because it's not defined.
Okay.
How about, how about sufficient?
Sufficient.
Okay.
Raise an increase sufficient to retain the services in our community.
How does that sound?
Adequate services, yes.
So it's an increase sufficient to keep adequate services, so maintain adequate service?
Services. How does that sound?
Okay.
Okay.
Because it is about public safety and service, and it is an irony that, that we as city citizens can't vote on that, as the county can't vote on the- as city citizens can't vote on that, as the county can't vote on the water issue, but as elected officials, we're representing the people, and I think-
But we're talking about the ambulance company now, not our water.
Well, we'll just trade, we'll send a letter in support of Delnor Ambulance, and they can send a letter either in favor of or declining fluoride water.
We're horse trading you, John.
Sorry, that was my sense of humor, or lack thereof. I have still a motion on the floor and a second.
I can second.
Did we have, did we have the correct wording on that, Robyn? And I think between Bob and Rod, we can come up with a letter, okay? I'm going to bring that back to the Commissioners, to the City Council, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We have four zero with a one abstention because Kelly left for conflict of interest. Thank you.
Ambulance would like to express its sincere thank you for it.
Thank you for being here. Would you like to call Kelly in? I'm going to, since we have no more agenda items, I am actually going to go to Legislative Matters, and Rod, would you start on Legislative Matters for us?
Sure. We have one important item that I wanted to make sure I announced to the council and to the public tonight, and some of you may have to catch Mr. Burns if he keels over in shock, because he's been on the council long enough to have been involved in this process for the eight or nine years, but we are finally going to get a public hearing on our local coastal program update with the Coastal Commission. We've known they were getting close for a while, and we knew it was going to be sometime this fall, but they have scheduled the first, which is not the action point, the final decision point, but the first public hearing on our local coastal plan amendment is next Thursday, September sixteenth.
In LA?
Actually, no, this one is, this one is halfway convenient. It's in Eureka, Warfinger Building, Eureka, yeah, nine AM. I think that was partly, I think they did this partly to be, or they scheduled ours because they knew the meeting was going to be in Eureka. Just so you know, it's not a total shock. We've been talking to them throughout this year. We had a real good meeting, actually several meetings throughout the year, and a real good meeting on August eighteenth, where we were able to look at a, kind of a pre-draft of things and identify some issues. I'm mentioning it for a couple of reasons tonight. I wanted to first tell the council and the community that that has now been firmed up as a date, Thursday, September sixteenth, nine AM, Warfinger Building, One Marina Way, Eureka. And the Coastal Commission's website is www.costal.ca.gov, and the agenda and materials are available on that website. The coastal staff that was up here on August eighteenth indicated that there would be some kind of public outreach by the Coastal Commission, and I'm assuming they're talking about property owners in the coastal zone that might be affected. We don't know exactly what that's going to look like, so the city is also, that's one reason I am making this pitch tonight. We want to start trying to get the word out to folks that may be interested. The more specific reason, though, that I wanted to get the council's attention on this tonight is that the Coastal Commission's staff has actually offered to come to Crescent City and meet with the City Council during the interim period between this September sixteenth meeting and what they believe the final action date will be, which is like October fourteenth, fifteenth, sixteenth, that one is down in San Diego, probably during the week of September twentieth. None of this is finalized yet, but I wanted to get a sense of, do you want to try to do that period, and if so, do you want to try to do it during our regular, our next regular meeting, which would be Monday, September twentieth, again, assuming that they're going to be available on that day, or do you want to try to do a workshop, maybe on like Monday the twenty-seventh, since that's an off Monday for us, we could set it up in the Fire Hall?
I would prefer the twenty-seventh.
There will be, well-
Give us, give us a little more time if it was needed, but-
So, we're picking a date that they will actually come here?
Yeah, and keep, and I'll keep in mind, this is all, there's a certain level of question as to whether they're, they've given us the timeframe, and given us the offer to come up during that interim period, but I haven't specifically said, are you available on September twenty-seventh? So we're, you know, if we could pick at least one date that would work for us-
It's the off Monday.
Yeah, yeah, it's an off Monday for us, and we could set it up as a, a workshop.
I'm not available on the twenty-seventh.
Okay.
Fine.
I'm available. I'd like to, I'd like to, I'd like the council to be able to review, and I know without a planner it's going to be hard, but, you know, maybe kind of an executive summary of the, any highlights or changes to the local coastal plan that we can, how, how big of a document is it?
Yeah, I've got the staff report as of Friday afternoon. It's probably like a quarter inch, quarter inch or a half inch. And we do have both Eric Taylor and Gary Pedrone from PMC doing just that, kind of summarizing it, trying to identify what the key issues are. So, that is something that could be made available.
Could we have that soon?
Yeah, this week for sure. And like I say, any of you that want to delve through the, the whole coastal staff report, in fact, I'll just make a couple of extra copies of that available.
It'd be good to read it anyway, even if the Coastal Commission changes their plans and can't come to Crescent City, even if that happens.
They wouldn't do that.
Oh.
I think they should have to have the meeting in Crescent City, in the, in the city or the county that they're approving the plan.
That would be nice. I was, I was pleased to hear that at least they're doing this first round in, in Eureka.
Because they're, they're calling this a public hearing, right?
Yes.
And so they're having the public hitting, hearing for the city of Crescent City in the city of Eureka?
That's true.
Makes me crazy.
So, so I'll take that, September twenty-seventh, as everyone except for-
Catherine.
Councilmember Murray, so we'll, we'll try to push for that. Probably like a five o'clock starter time, starting time, and I'll keep you posted.
This is important for you, and I'd like you to be there, if you can. Especially since you like them. Okay, September twenty-seventh, and I'll work on Catherine.
Great. And that's it for Legislative?
Don't let me forget to give this to you, so we can work on a letter for Pelican Bay-
Sure.
-community members. Reports, concerns, referrals, council travel, training. Ms. Westfall?
Can you start with Councilmember Slert?
No, I'm starting with you.
I just thought that if he chose to berate me anymore, I might have a chance to rebut it.
Did you have anything to report?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Okay, I attended two luncheons, both having to do with economic development. The first one was a lender that came up from Eureka, and the important information I learned from that is that they can group pools of money from credit union banks, their lending institution, and put together programs. So, the other thing I learned is that Northwoods had a delicious catered meal. I'd like to give Northwoods a big plug, it was fantastic. The other one was an economic development luncheon that Rob and Catherine and I attended. Bo Renfro was the speaker, he gave an excellent presentation talking about the airport expansion, the sewer plant, high-speed internet funding, Highway one ninety-nine being straightened out, and allowing trucks to come in and out of our area, about harbor and development, expansion of Lucky Seven Casino Rancheria, and he talked about creating ethanol from clearing the redwoods. The concern I have is that, getting back to asking you about the tourist industry, is it just seemed like there's this bigger picture at work, that we're gearing up for just a tourist trade, and I'm concerned, because I've lived in tourist communities before, and with that comes prosperity and congestion, et cetera. So, on the one hand, you've got growth, and you've got businesses, and you've got jobs, but on the other hand, you're going to give up some quality of life, and that's what I want to advise the Planning Commission to always keep in balance. Lastly, I wanted to just give you an update that I've been in touch with the Ojai Valley homeless shelter people, who have run a very successful temporary homeless shelter program for ten or so years, and have started giving Rod Butler that information, so I'm hopeful we'll get something ready for the people here in time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Burns?
I have nothing to report at this time, thank you.
Mr. Slert?
I attended a LAFCO meeting with my colleague, Ms. Murray. We approved a new city sphere of influence that includes the Martin Ranch, Outbelly Rancheria, so that was a major milestone.
Great.
Attended the tri-agency meeting about a week ago, multiple things discussed. We had a very successful council workshop on CBDG grants, and I offered at the urging of the mayor to assist Mr. Barnes and his team regarding the wastewater treatment plant, interiors, furniture, and carpet. So we've had a handful of meetings, we've looked at several options available for seating and furnishings. We then, Debbie Stover actually had those products brought to the site, and we actually sat in them, photographed them, felt them, assessed them. We've always considered price, durability, and value. We've looked at Home Depot and local carpet options and prices, and all of this is helping Mr. Barnes to zero in on finishing touches on the wastewater treatment facility, and I've been happy to donate my time and services to that end. I also want to-
Thank you.
My pleasure. I also want to give a salute to the new Chevron gas station, recent improvements in the car wash. I think it's a wonderful facility that looks like it's already being highly used and welcomed, welcomed by our community. Seemed to be filled with tourists over the weekend. I'd also acknowledge that we got our new cell tower in place, and that's another accomplishment. It seemed to go smoothly. And then I'd like to give a salute to Barron's Furniture for their recent paint job on their facilities at Fifth and 101 North.
I think it's actually Griff, Griffins?
A Griffin, excuse me.
There is a Barron's in Brookings, right?
That's right.
Griffins.
And, and then-
They're going to love that.
And, and closing, I would say that I appreciated the letter that Supervisor McClure offered the council regarding the lack of the ability of the county to be represented in the vote regarding fluoride. I've had many people personally contact me at the office that live in the county that are upset and disgusted that the people in the city are going to take and make that vote as to their water, and, and they don't have any input on that. So, I appreciate her letter to this council. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Murray?
Yes, I appreciated the CBDG workshop. It was very enlightening, and so I learned a lot from that. I attempted the physician's reception at the Hampton, so it was nice to meet a couple of new doctors. And then they had a really nice reception for the new art at the art gallery last Friday night, and we had a nice Labor Day breakfast that Mr. Assemblyman Wes Chesborough attended on Saturday morning. I attended the economic development luncheon that Councilmember Westfall attended, and Mr. Renfro did a really great job of highlighting, lighting the major areas where we're building on our infrastructure, specifically the wastewater treatment facility and how we're nearly done with it. So he highlighted that, and I was very pleased with his presentation. I ran into Richard Miles, and he has been doing some great gardening work in front of the tiles that Mr. Munger has been working on right on Third Street, and he's do, he's been bringing over some compost from, over from the Family Resource Center in First Five, and he's been doing a beautiful job where the clock is downtown on Third Street. So I just wanted to give a little salute to him, and also to the guys over in the yard who purchased a new bike for him.
I was going to say, he's sporting his new Huffy bike, and that was purchased by, by Public Works employees.
So I thought, I thought that that was a real nice win-win for everyone, but he's been doing a lot of work for us, so, and I think the yard guys really appreciated it. So thank you to the yard guys, too. And then I went to the senior center and saw our Congressman Mike Thompson at lunchtime today, and then a monumental move with the LAFCO decision to include the Martin Ranch, so that was, that was great. So, those are my activities.
Thank you, you've been busy.
Yes.
Okay, so I attended a lot of the same things, tri-agency, the physician's reception. We have two wonderful new physicians in our area, Ms. Dr. Noonan and Dr. Schwartz, and so I want to welcome them. The reason we visited Congressman Thompson today is, it was the seventy-fifth anniversary of the signing of the Social Security Act, and so it was a celebration, and there was a nice cake, and Mr. Honeywell Tractor would like to know, and I'd like this to be actually be on the agenda, I think I've asked for it before, but, an update on our code enforcement letter issues. And he brought up a good point I hadn't really thought about, and that is whether or not our fire chief has the authority to write a citation if a piece of property becomes a fire hazard, such as the one on North Crest Drive, where the bushes are about twelve feet tall now.
We're in to like the third or fourth letter to the property owner, Mr. Deal, on that property, and for the first time ever, we intend to, you know, carry it out to the fullest extent, and Mr. Black and Martha Rice have been involved in-
Thank you.
Those letters, there's a certain number of days you have to allow between each letter, but we're, we're in to probably at least the third letter that he's received.
And he's been cited, not by the fire chief, by code enforcement.
Okay, good.
It's the same Mr. Deal that was involved with other code enforcements in the city.
Yeah.
You know, he's the perfect situation where those goats would work. He'd probably be happy with it now if we could just coordinate getting this darn goat over there with a herder.
Met with California Endowment Group last week, and they, the plan is finished, and now they'd like input from the city on where they may be able to partner with us on projects in the community. And they were especially interested in our beachfront park area, and how if we have our master plan that we put together, and, and let's say there's a, a walkway, you know, or something that has to do with health, that they could maybe even help fund just a piece of something, you know, maybe up to a hundred thousand dollars, or if, or if we had some kind of a project, and keeping in mind that this healthy community is related, that they could maybe provide a match to help get a grant or something along those lines. So, it would behoove us to take a good look at that plan now, and just keep it in our minds as we're moving forward with our projects. I coordinated a meeting with our parks, and our city manager, and our city chief of police to discuss just general items of security, but really Steve Chaney and I had met, and I took a tour of the parks with him, and we talked about some familiar, you know, just some- some kind of, they're not in the city, you know, limits obviously, but they're having a lot of break-ins up at Enderd's Beach Campground. I'm not sure if it's called that, but he was looking for some creative ideas and thought processes on how to address the issue. It's in the county, but the city chief and city manager were nice enough to sit down with Marshal Neek, their head park ranger, and just talk about some possible solutions. And obviously, you know, the sheriff will be a part of that discussion in the future, but we had some other, other things that were brought to the table, and I think even if it's not in the city limits, having those discussions is always good. So I wanted to thank you guys for that. And other than update on code enforcement, I would personally like to see, I've been thinking about this for a long time, and now that we have a full planning commission, I think it would behoove this council to have a quarterly report, verbal report from the chair of the planning commission, to kind of just hear from them, what projects they're working on, you know, updates, things they're looking at in the future, just to provide this council with a little more knowledge of what's going on, so. That's my request. I was also asked about our policy on tasers, and I don't know if that's, I know that it was addressed by our last audit, and just kind of wanted to maybe find out if that should be agendized, or if maybe the council could just get an update on, just since it's such a big item in the news lately, people are, you know, interested in what our policies are. And other than that, I will be attending tomorrow at the Crescent City Harbor, a meeting regarding our fishing industry. I've been asked to attend based on the letter that we wrote in support of the salmon disaster a few weeks ago. I received a call from Barbara Boxer's office in follow-up to that letter, so I'll be following up with them, so that's a good thing. And I'll be attending Lega Cities next week, and this Friday night is our first home football Anything else? Nope? Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you.